Okay, we are officially recording. Mrs. President, will you please call this meeting to order again?
Yes, we will call this meeting of the Ohio High Point Joint Vocational School District to order. Roll call, please.
Boswell.
Yes.
Ruckhart.
Here.
Buck.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dunham.
Here.
Ludlow.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
McMahill.
I can't hear anybody.
Moore.
Who said I can't hear anybody?
Roger.
That's Moore. That was Moore.
Okay.
Okay. Reams.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Does anybody hear me?
Here.
Yes, Roger. Did I call Stanford?
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Roger Moore, can you hear us?
I think we can hear him. I think he can't hear us.
He's calling in.
Roger, I can still see you.
No.
If he can't see, like, he can't hear us, but if you, if you, let me see, I don't know, if he could dial in, at least we can hear each other.
He has his phone in his hand.
If he doesn't have a microphone. Oh, okay.
You can also turn on your captions at the bottom of the screen.
Because that's what I tried to do and that didn't. I was asking John to resend me the link and I was going to see then, I could see everybody and I had turned on captions, but it didn't get me anywhere.
Roger just texted me. I just told him to dial in.
Okay.
Roger's gone.
Can anybody email me the link back to my work again? Because now since I've dialed in, I can't, I was going to see if I could also then get it up on my screen.
Yes, I'll email it to you, Ann.
All right, thank you. The areeems328@gmail.com.
Okay, I resent Roger the, um, phone number and.
I'm almost wondering if we should go with Pirate's Code on this. Those that fall behind get left behind.
Thanks. Well, I didn't think we're doing too bad since this is the very first time we've tried this and this the way it is.
Yeah, I would say we go ahead and go to introduction of guests while John is with Roger them. Um, the guests who are on here, I believe is, uh, Kelsey. Um, Kelsey Webb, Nate Dunham from WPKO. And, uh, you can see if you're in the list of administrators that are here, which I believe is Terry, Deb, Brad. Um, Tanya, Allison are also on here at this time.
Welcome, everybody.
Rick, this is Matt. Can I suggest that everybody mute your, your device unless you're talking or voting so that we don't get a bunch of background and flipping back and forth to screens?
It's a good suggestion. If, if those who know how to do that, feel free. If you don't, this will have background noise. Next part. President.
Do we have to do the roll call again now that, um, the recording is on?
We did it.
We already did.
We, we did that, Ann. We did the roll call with the recording.
Okay, okay.
We are now up to district update. Roger, are you on now?
I am on by phone only.
Okay, that's fine. Roger is back with us by phone, so, um, he can still vote. Madam President, we're up to district update. Would you like for me to continue?
Yes, Dr. Smith, please.
Okay. Um, to say the least, this has been one of the most unique weeks, uh, in my career. Uh, the school district has, uh, closed down, uh, as far as things on campus. Uh, we've had very minimal staff here since the governor's order to do that for Tuesday this week. Uh, we have, however, um, have been educating kids. I can tell you that in calling staff members, um, it's been a wide range of, uh, of people's experience, both in satellite and on main campus. But most are saying that it's going relatively well, actually surprisingly well, uh, for most of them of what they anticipated. Um, I have everything from 98% of the students in their class doing their work and turning things in to maybe 50-50 for some of the other students and some of our, uh, challenging students, uh, who you have to stay on them to do the work, uh, we're having a hard time even getting them to contact us back. So we're looking at ideas, uh, going into spring break and how we come out of that if this is to go longer, how we might, uh, better communicate with them and, and talk with them as well, uh, in trying to get some of that work turned back in. Of course, part of that will come out of, uh, state legislation that was, uh, out there today as far as what they give us and the details of what seniors or how grades or things might possibly work. Uh, as we have, uh, been told there will be no state testing, so that'll impact web exams as well as report cards, uh, all those things moving forward. Um, I will say our staff is doing a, a great job. I've talked to probably over 50% of them, uh, by now by phone. Uh, they have students who are emailing them at 6:30 in the morning to the very latest that I've had is 1:58 a.m. And a teacher has his proof that he recontacted the student at that time, uh, from the email. So, uh, what I can tell you is that, uh, our teachers are working, um, in, in a very unique situation. A lot of one-on-one, a lot of Zooms and Google meets with maybe just two or three students at a time. Uh, many of our students are working, so, uh, mo- many of our students do have those jobs, whether it's fast food or Walmart or Kroger's, where now it's home delivery and essential and stocking shelves. Uh, many of them are working during the day and then contacting the teachers at, you know, 5:30, 8:30, 10 o'clock at night to ask questions about their homework. So I don't think the, um, standard workday is really the same. I know I had talked to Ann and Matt about making sure that our workday was eight to three. I'm going to recommend that we really look at just making sure our teachers do a seven-hour workday, uh, whether that's 12 to 7. As many of you have had teenagers, some of them aren't even waking up till noon. And so we have data, uh, that shows us when most kids are getting online or contacting students and it's not during that normal eight to three type of workday. And so I think as long as they communicate with their supervisors or follow the schedule of their partner schools, if that's what's being dictated, uh, because they, they're all doing different things. Um, that's just one of the, uh, recommendations I have, that I'll be making that change with our staff to move toward a more flexible schedule to meet the needs of students, uh, across our district. It seems to be going at a variety of different types of time. Um, other things that have taken place here is we've been working to collect all of our, uh, personal protective equipment throughout the district. And so, uh, we will be, uh, looking there to distribute that, uh, this week. Uh, we did our first set of things to Union County, uh, tomorrow. Uh, I'll start with Champaign County as I'm picking our last bit of, uh, glasses up at Triad location. And then we will distribute to Logan, Oglaeys, and Hardin County, uh, the materials. We have collected about 69 boxes of, uh, medical gloves, around 13 boxes of food gloves, four or five boxes of masks. Uh, we have some simulated PPEs that we use in our STNA program. Uh, we've donated, uh, over 300 of those and, uh, some other gowns and miscellaneous, uh, things that, uh, have been asked of us, about 300 of our, uh, safety glasses that we use for automotive and welding and our manufacturing classrooms, uh, that we're donating to our county EMAs as requested, uh, by the governor. That's, I think, all I have in case anyone has a question.
I have no questions.
Okay, uh, that's the update. As you saw on the, um, agenda, we had, uh, the main campus, uh, student of the month, uh, was Mason Boggs, Allied Health and Nursing from Mechanicsburg, Jacob Hill from Graphic and Design Printing from Triad. Our, uh, staff member of the month was Dustin Tillis, and he's one of our career tech aides. And, um, I'll, I'll be skipping, uh, right now probably the questions of the month, um, as we'll talk more later.
Okay, and then can you tell me the next item on the agenda? I left, I, I took off for my work and I left my iPad on my kitchen table. I apologize.
That's okay. I'll keep going down, uh, through this. Madam President, we're up to committees and reports. Legislative report from Paul May- Mayhew.
Okay, um, OTAS spec, uh, on Ju- on July 1st, all school districts in the state will begin implementing a new teacher evaluation system. The State Board of Education on March 10th voted 15 to 0 to adopt the new framework. The board's vote was prompted by Senate Bill 216 of last year's, uh, General Assembly, which required boards to revise Ohio teacher evaluation system and base new system on recent recommendations of the teacher education standard boards. The panel, which is comprised of educators, administrators, school board members, and others, began making recommendations to the framework in 2016 and worked through 2019. Um, House Bill 218, which I can't see ever passing. They put the new school operated by a school district shall begin school day ear- earlier than 8:30 a.m. Is used in the section, "School Day" has been, has the same meaning in the section 3313.481 in the revised code. Um, Senate Bill 219, uh, the Department of Education, in conjunction with the Department of Higher Education, the Council of Office and the State Board established under section 6301.04 of the revised code for workforce development, shall develop the, and administrate the Career Pathways Apprentice Program for students in grades nine through 12. Let's see what else here. Senate Bill 89. Education Management Information System means, uh, integrated systems statewide data collection, reporting and component of the school districts and school prescriptions under section 3301.0714. That's all I got today.
Thank you so much.
Paul, I'll just add to that, that once again, the, uh, the Senate has passed a measure, which I believe the House will see what the changes are. Um, but it is, uh, about making sure school districts, just so you know, still provide meals, uh, maybe even through the, through the summertime, uh, providing extensive flexibility for K-12s. And I'm assuming that will include us, include testing, report cards, senior graduation, special ed. And so we'll be looking, I think, in the next couple of days to see, uh, what comes out of that bill, how ODE provides us the interpretation of that language, uh, as well as, you know, seeing what the governor, uh, officially decides to do with, uh, the school year.
I think I didn't get.
Okay, thank you.
Updates today because I didn't get out of work till 10 till 7 today, so.
Sure. We, we have no calls for modification of the, the agenda. The next part is the BCAA-C, just that stands for Business Advisory Councils. As you know, I sit on, uh, three of those, um, and, uh, most of them have submitted their stuff in March and should be on your home district's website. So whatever BAC is local, they all have, uh, action plans and steps. Uh, some of those things you've seen with like, what's your E, uh, as far as, you know, enroll, enlist, or employ, uh, has been one of the kind of concepts that most of them have taken on. Uh, there's been different curriculum discussions, uh, out there as well as far as also having businesses, uh, join, uh, in school districts and having, uh, special speakers and talking about careers. And so they all have like a different flavor. I would just suggest that you check your, uh, home district's website and see if you see the BCA, uh, report out there. We, the Career Centers, don't have to have our own BCA because we already have business advisories for each of our labs and each of our career fields. And so we cover it through that, uh, means, but we're also, uh, a major advisory to all three groups, uh, by, by being part of those organizations in each county. The next, uh, thing we end up is the upcoming small board meeting group, uh, and how you would like to do this. We can, uh, that includes Mrs. Dunham, Mr. Mahill, Mr. Mauser, Deb Purcell, and Mr. Wright. Um, they, they were scheduled to be, uh, with us on Saturday, April 4th, uh, next week to do a, the small, last of the small group meetings. And so we can do that either through, um, a video like this and sending out a request. We can do it through K- Kelsey and I making a phone call and just asking you the questions. Uh, Deb Purcell suggested maybe emailing the questions and letting them just answer. I will say there's been value in the conversation and talking, um, with everybody. So I would just like to know from those, uh, people who will be part of that group, uh, how would they like to handle that Saturday meeting?
I'd like to do it like this.
Mr. Wright.
I'm okay with doing it this way.
Okay, so we will plan on then a, uh, video meeting. Uh, Mr. Mahill's taking that through chat. I saw that. And so with those three, uh, being present, we will set up a, uh, Google invite for you, uh, tomorrow for April 4th at 8:30 and, uh, we'll just have virtual donuts, I guess.
Sounds like a plan.
I will just go down through the rest of these things. Uh, Facilities and Grounds Committee meeting is supposed to be April 22nd, uh, at 6:00 p.m. Uh, we will determine if we do that or move it back depending on whether we keep this virtual. Um, probably as part of my district update, I should have said too that we have a new set of drawings, uh, around, uh, Plan C or D, whatever you determine it to be. And, uh, those are now with the Thomas and Marker and are looking at pricing. Uh, those companies are also on a kind of a stay-at-home order. So right now we're looking at April 20th, sometime that week of trying to get back together and go over the pricing process, uh, and so we'll determine if that stays on track. So I don't know if we'll have a lot for Facilities and Grounds on April 22nd. We have, um, other meetings on our educator, uh, was supposed to be on May 7th. Uh, Policy Committee was supposed to be May 13th, Senior Breakfast and Convocation, May 20th. Uh, and our regular work session, May 13th. I've left all those on the agenda for right now. I figured that, uh, we could make a determination at the April regular meeting on April 22nd. If we decided we needed to cancel any of those May events, we might have more details then as far as the spread and the peak and the things that we're looking for from the governor's office and the data to kind of make those decisions unless the board wants to cancel them. At this point, I figure we could, uh, decide those cancellations in April.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable to me, Rick. Let's leave them on until, uh, we know a little bit more.
Okay. We now are up to the approval of the minutes. Uh, February 26th, you should have had those in your, uh, packet. Um.
So I will ask for a motion in a second for approval of the minute.
Ms. Mahill.
Do you have what you need, Eric?
I got at least two.
Okay, are there questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Ruckhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Y- yes.
Burrows.
Yes.
Campbell. Dave.
Yep.
Dunham.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Boswell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda?
Our next item is to go into executive session. Um, for the press, uh, we will ask them to jump off and Kelsey Webb will let you know when we're back in regular session, uh, so that you can jump back on and we'll give some time for that. For the administrators who are on, um, John Case knows all of you. He will send you a text after we come out of executive session if you wish to jump back on at that time. But we would ask those people to leave and so just the board is here for executive session, uh, to talk about compensation of employees and security arrangements, emergency response protocol.
And don't forget to stop the recording, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss, um, personnel items?
Boswell.
Ms. May. Ms. Mahill.
Roll call, please.
Buck.
Yes.
Burrows.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dunham. Alyssa. Ludlow.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, Ludlow.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Boswell.
Yes.
Ruckhart.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, turn the recording off, please, Rick.
Hold on, trying. The recording is back live. I see Tanya has rejoined. I believe Terry has rejoined. We now have Nate Dunham has returned back. Kelsey Webb is back. I believe most people, um, have rejoined. Madam President, let's hold one more minute and 8 o'clock, we'll start back up.
Okay.
Might want to mute your phone or mute your computer for the back feed. It is now 8 o'clock. I see that we have the press back with us and those who have wanted to rejoin. We are up to section 8, which is item of consideration as recommended by the treasurer.
Eric, do you want to present?
We need a motion first, Madam President.
A motion in a second to bring to the floor for discussion the items, um, from the treasurer.
Boswell.
McMahill.
Roll call, please.
Do you want me to present first?
I'm sorry.
We, we may have roll call that quickly. Um. Uh, I would just like to, uh, note, uh, the information I shared with you last week. Just in the past week, I've received the tax settlements from our big four counties, Union, Champaign, Logan, and Hardin. Uh, you know, it is difficult to be unhappy about receiving money you weren't expecting. Uh, we saw about, about a 3% increase in real estate tax revenues over last year. There is no way you can't think of that as anything but a good thing. I, however, have some things to sort out because my model that I've been working with for about three years, I was projecting a slight decrease in tax revenues. So, uh, as I said in my notes, uh, I'm going to use this time between now and the April meeting, uh, really to autopsy the situation and just try to understand what I didn't get right. Because there is, uh, there is clearly something, some thing amiss and, uh, you know, I want to sort it out before we start relying on these projections, uh, into next school year and beyond and other forecasts.
Do you think, Eric, that it might have been part of the revaluation?
That's just it. I, I really need to take the whole thing apart and.
Okay.
And you have to remember, I, I do this really by working with the information from five counties. So I've got a bit of research ahead of me. Uh, so it's more than just calling up my county auditor and asking what happened. It, it's a little, it's a little more cumbersome, uh, on this JBS end.
Okay.
But, uh, but I will do just that and hopefully, uh, hopefully we will have the ability to, uh, uh, to actually talk face to face about this, but if nothing else, I will get a summary out to all of you in writing.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure. On the agenda itself, if you go to, uh, item 8D, we are asking for an increase in appropriations, none of them related to the general fund. Uh, two are related to some local grants that we have received and the third is for a student activity fund. Those appropriation increases total $3,850. Uh, aside from my report and that increase, I do not have anything in addition to present on.
Do any of the board members have any further comments or questions?
John, Jeff Burrows here. I've lost all sound on the meeting. I can still see everything the same, but I have lost all sound.
Can hear you, Jeff.
Call Jeff Burrows.
Calling Jeff Burrows.
Jeff here.
Jeff, we can hear you. Can you not hear us more?
Yeah, I see everything exactly the same as I've been watching during the meeting, but my sound is totally dead.
Okay. My suggestion would be I can send you the number and you can just call in. You can still do it. You can still have your video on and have the phone on and you'd be able to hear both.
Okay.
Okay, I'll send you that number.
Oh, okay.
I've got it up on my screen. Do you want me to repeat it?
I'm sending it to him right now.
All right.
I can come back to Jeff and pick up his vote last.
Okay, roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dunham.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Boswell.
Yes.
Brookhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Jeff Burrows, are you with us? Hey Jeff, if you can hear me, give us a thumbs up for a yes.
Is this used the other way, Eric? We can hear him, but he can't hear you.
He's dialing it now, though, I think. He's got the
Yeah, I can hear the phone numbers being pressed in.
Hey Jeff, are you with us?
Jeff Burrows, have you joined us?
I might suggest that we have the votes to move to the next item.
Agreed.
Okay, next, we, okay. Next item on the agenda?
Is consideration recommendation by the superintendent. We, we need the motions.
Campbell.
For the, okay, a motion in a second to discuss the items of the superintendent.
Buck.
I have Campbell, okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Smith.
9A was just some resignations of mostly people who have taken new jobs or families, new location that we have on that. 9C is the out-of-state trips. And what you'll notice is I kind of have taken the same approach that I took with the meetings that we had listed in discussion. Many of these are for June, July, CTSO-type trips. We know that most of our kids did not get to participate in state. Some are still doing it as a virtual state competition. And so some of these national trips might still be available for them. And so at this time, I'm asking the board if they want to approve them and we'll make the decisions later as we get more information. I know that the Olympics have canceled for July 24th, but I'm not exactly sure where we'll be as a country by then. Or does the board think I should pull this agenda item at this time? But, but 9C is out there and my idea was to go ahead and approve them and then we will cancel those at a later date, should the nationals just cancel themselves naturally or other things take place that, that brings us to where we don't really feel safe to send kids.
Hate to intrude. The PIN number is not working.
We can now hear you, Jeff. Can you, oh.
I have the 621-840- 36-
He can't hear you.
362. I've reset it, I've reset it to him. It's the same one I sent to Roger.
Hi, Eric.
So, so that's the out-of-state trips.
On that one, Dr. Smith, I don't know whether we should modify the, the actual item in that we approve it with the condition of that we may rescind it depending on the conditions at the time so that there's no misunderstanding between the individuals and the board?
That's fine. I, I think we would have to by rules of order, we would have to pull this one
I've lost your call, Eric.
On 9C by itself with the motion change of, of that.
Well, I, I'm open to whatever the rest of the board members say. You have an opinion?
Matt, I'm good with approving it as it is, understanding that, you know, things are going to change and we can address that when that happens.
Okay.
I'm okay with it also.
Okay. Is there anything further, Dr. Smith?
The last two things on there, of course, is the Impact Scholarship Fund. Money has already come in. This is approving the motion to put that money there. And then as regular donations in the donation forms are filled out, we will next month show you what companies and what funds have come in. But as I talked to you last month, 10A is about just making sure that we, oh, that's under your section. Sorry. I guess that's all I had under 9D was the hiring of the secretary to replace Thandra as the Director's Secretary.
Any other questions or comments about the items? If not, then if we're ready for roll call, roll call, please, Eric.
Campbell. Dave Campbell.
Yes. Yeah, what else?
Dunham.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Boswell.
Yes.
Brookhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Jeff Burrows.
Yes.
Oh, he's back.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item?
The board action items, 10A and 10B. You'll need a motion.
Okay. A motion in a second to approve items 10A and 10B.
More.
I heard the first one in McMahill. Is that what you have, Eric?
I got it.
Okay. Are there any questions?
As I was saying, the 10A is the Impact Scholarship Fund. This is, like I said before, just the approval of making sure the funds go that are raised by Tanya and her staff to go to the scholarship fund. The other one is the Payroll Distance Learning Coronavirus Academic Motion that we have already discussed in executive session, just to make sure that you understood the paying of employees during this time.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
So is the Impact Fund going to be kept separate from the general fund money?
Nan, did you ask if the Impact Fund was going to be kept separate from the general fund?
Yes.
Yes, it will be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call, please.
Dunham.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
McMahill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Boswell.
Yes.
Brookhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Jeff Burrows.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
You're up to 10D, which is a motion to adjourn.
Anything else for the good of the organization before we adjourn? If not, thank you, Dr. Smith and John Case and everybody for working so diligently to make this meeting happen. I'm excited about trying it again in the future. I want everybody to stay ever so safe out there. A motion in a second for adjournment?
Wallace. Dunham.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stay safe and take care. The meeting is adjourned. So, Dr. Smith, you'll remember to turn off your recorder.
I will turn off my recorder and then I'll call Nate Dunham to answer his question.
Okay, thank you so much, buddy.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
See ya. Listen, Dunham.
Awesome. Just a quick note. I don't know if I need to talk to John-